Okay, I'm in, am I in?
I can.
Alright, I'm here. Sorry about that.
Everyone.
You ready?
I am ready if everybody is ready to go. I'd like to call the March 16th Selectman's Selectman's meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Do I have a roll call, please?
Wayne Miller, present.
Veronica Cal, present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
The United States and America to the Republic, which it stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Wait for the flag to come down. I wanted to announce that the meeting is being recorded. And I would like people that are not participating in the meeting to please mute your microphone. It'll make it easier for all of us to hear. I have no additions or deletions to tonight's meeting. Joe or Wayne, do either of you. No, alright. So we are at the pub of comment period. Do I hear any public comments? Yes, Joan. Please unmute yourself.
But I had, thought I had, sorry. I see that you all are voting to approve the 12, 15, 20 meeting minutes tonight.
Yes, we are.
And I'm just asking to be, if I could say a few words when that happens because I've got a few words to say.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Emily?
Madam Chair, I was curious, since we are not officially having a Recreation Commission meeting tonight, along with the BOS meeting, would, as a commissioner, would I be able to speak during the budget portion of tonight's meeting?
I believe that would be okay. You're on the commission, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes, absolutely, you're welcome. So let me just, and if I, just remind me when we get there in case I've moved on. So I'm writing these down. So I remember, okay. Thank you. I am going to try to keep the meeting on a time schedule because we do have several executive sessions after the meeting tonight. So, please understand if I'm moving you along. Alright, so we're going to start with our 6:10 hearing. We're a little bit early, so that is good news. It's 6:06 and Joan, you are on for 6:10. Joan Savoy as Chair of the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust.
Ready?
I am.
Okay, I promise I'll keep it under five.
Thank you.
So, as soon as I can get a quorum, because we had a meeting last Friday night to do all this, but we didn't have a quorum because I forgot about our fourth member. So as soon as I can get a quorum, we will be voting, I'm happy to say, for Central Mass Housing Alliance to be, to reimburse them for funds they have dispersed to our town residents under the COVID cares relief mortgage and rental assistance program. So they helped several people. Some of them also got rental stipends and Lori Plord, bless her heart, before she left, she got permission from, from the Brian Sweeney at the Housing Department. He said, he said that all the documentation that we have had been submitted was just fine, that they could, the CMHA can combine our funds with Raft funds. Raft funds also help all kinds of households, providing up to 10,000 per household to help preserve current housing or people move to new housing, can be used for rent or mortgage or rear security deposits and all. So everything's in order. I did want to report because I believe in transparency and I have to sign a certification saying, I ask that if you added that I report regularly and that's my report. Has any questions?
Jim or Jo and Wayne, do you have any questions?
I have a comment and a request. I apologize, Joan, for not making the meeting Friday. One, I didn't get the invite and two, I just don't have any time. So I'm asking to rescind my appointment from, as the Board of Selectmen Representation through the Affordable Housing and be replaced by one of you two temporarily until the new member is on.
Do we have to vote to accept Wayne's resignation? Is that how we would do this? I know, Joe, you were on the Housing Trust as well. So that means.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we're just putting ourselves in a pickle getting onto all the boards right now. I think we need to get to all the budgeting, whatever. Joan, how many people do you have on there right now?
It's me, Mike Verosco and Gary Shepherd.
So you need three to have a quorum, correct?
Well, I did need three to have a quorum, but if Wayne's going to resign, I'll only need two to have a quorum, which at this point would help things immeasurably.
So could we at this point accept Wayne's resignation as the Board of Selectmen Representative on the trust? And then appoint a new Board of Selectmen Representatives at our next meeting, perhaps?
Or after.
I'm not 100% sure, Veronica, I'm sorry to interrupt, that we can operate without a trustee from the board.
Oh, so. Alright, Jim, a little guidance, how do we go about then doing this?
Wayne is wanting to step down, whether his resignation or not, his, his action is his action. So if Wayne is stepping down and I, I'll defer to Joan if she interprets the document that way, that says that there must be a member seated at all times to conduct business, then perhaps one of you stepping in tonight as an interim, just to keep the board active would be appropriate. And if you find out in a week that it's not necessary to have a selectman member, then you can bow out until after the election when you have a full board and.
I. Okay. I haven't yet got the documents since we accepted it, so that was a while back.
We should vote on accepting Wayne, thanking him for his service to do what he did on that and take a vote on that. Do we have, we gotta take a vote, correct?
Excuse me, but he needs to put it in writing and send it to the town clerk.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll make it official, then you can accept it.
So we can at the next meeting then, so this is an agenda item for next time. At the next meeting then, we can accept Wayne's resignation. He's resigned as of today, so I assume he's not on the board. And then we can, at our next meeting, assign a new representative, correct Kathy?
Exactly.
Okay, alright, then let's, then let's do that. Joan, I see your hand.
So, but that leaves me quorumless till after your next meeting and I'd really like to get this invoice paid.
Wouldn't your quorum be two people then? I mean, your quorum is the majority of the people that are on the board.
They're actually on the board. I did speak with Chaz, he said it was, we were supposed to have somebody from the board on the, on the board, but, okay, we'll have to iron that one out.
Does this hinder you signing the check to release?
Well, why don't we do this, this way, Veronica? I'll submit my resignation and you can accept my resignation contingent upon Kathy receiving it tomorrow and appoint somebody as an interim. Does it work, Jim?
Yeah, you can make an appointment tonight, you know, once, you know.
Okay, and then we can do a contingent. Alright, so do I have a motion to accept Wayne's resignation from the Board of the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust?
Make a motion, we accept Wayne Miller's resignation from the Townsend Board Housing Trust.
And you want to make a contingent on appointing?
Contingent upon appointing a. Tonight.
Alright, all in favor?
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. So now is there a motion to appoint a new member to the Affordable Housing Trust contingent on Wayne's resignation tomorrow? Or whenever, contingent on his resignation?
I'll make a more.
Any gaps?
An interim on to replace Wayne after his resignation tomorrow.
Who did you nominate?
The nominator just made the motion. I just did, I was that one, Veronica?
Okay, I'm sorry, so I was not prepared for this, so, okay. I'll go on until we can have someone else go on, I mean, why not? It's fine, so, so Joe nominate me contingent on Wayne resigning.
Veronica Cal to the Townsend Housing Trust Authority as an interim when Wayne, upon Wayne's resignation until we have.
And I'll second that.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, sure, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes, sorry.
Veronica Cal, yeah. Alright, so Wayne, when you resign, I become, and that way we have a continuity for the Housing Trust.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Alright, so I, thank you, Joan, are we all set? Yes, okay, so I am going to move on to our 6:15 appointment at 6:15 with John Barrett for temporary permission to enter and cross over the Town Hall parking lot. So John.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Again, I'm here on behalf of Kevin and Denise Miller to request the permission from the board essentially for a temporary right to cross through the parking lot so that they can access the rear of their lot, begin the renovations of 270 Main Street, former Pete's Barbershop. I'm not sure what formalities the board might require, but we wanted to just approach the board about this. This is anticipatory to the, the town meeting and then a permanent easement, but this would just be, for lack of a better term, a license or permission from the board, which you do have the authority of having control over town property to grant someone permission to enter upon the town property. And what we, he would be doing is simply going through, he probably would need to put in a dumpster on his property, but to drive a truck in there to drop off a dumpster. And, you know, basically equipment from tradespeople for, you know, carpenters, electricians, plumbers, you know, the types of vehicles that they might use, vans or trucks. That's about it.
So I have questions for you, John, but I'd like to defer to Joe and Wayne if they have questions.
I have a couple, but Wayne, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, we've been discussing this for quite a while and I think just a simple easement and liability from town council.
Is, is, I looked at that side, I didn't look at it real well. Is there an area that he can drive straight in or is there, it looked like there's somewhat of an embankment that they're going to have to go over at some point? So I haven't paid that close attention to it. Is it just, there's no grading, no nothing that's going to be involved, just basic drive in?
I don't believe so. Mr. Miller's here, but I believe the only impediment to accessing the lot right now is maybe some brush and a snow pile that, you know, was from the town parking lot. I think it was pretty much gone now, but I don't believe there's an embankment. Kevin, do you?
I don't think it's anything that's, you know, inhibitive, but more importantly is the trees. I think we should mention that.
Yeah, that, that's one other thing that the plan is to remove the trees there. Right now, there's one or two trees that are sort of overhanging your Selectman's office. I know you're not there, but maybe overhanging Jim's office right now. We'd rather not have something come down on the Town Hall.
So you're talking about trees on the side of Town Hall, not behind the property?
Well, that, that would be part of the work that's going to be done going in there.
Judge, do you have any other questions? I mean, I can come back to you, but I have several. The first one was my understanding from the last time we met, brought before the board two times ago, was that if there was, if the, what is now a citizen petitioned article to allow the right of access to the back of the property permanently through the town parking lot, that unless that was granted, the applicant was not going to go forward with renovating the property. Has that changed, Mr. Barrett? Mr. Barrett?
Well, Mr. Miller, if you can, I mean, I don't think the, the idea for the easement was so that in the future, there would be the ability to get from one lot, thank you, Jim, you know, from, from the parking lot into the rear of the lot. Mr. Miller is, I think, still going to do renovations, but the amount of renovations he can do is going to be limited by the access that he has. So if he can't get access this way, the amount of renovations he'll be able to do may be curtailed. And if, if you can expand on that, Kevin.
I want, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. So I want to ask the first question.
Do you mind if we could take them in turn or rather than try to, if we can resolve this question first?
So is the, the question was, is the applicant applying for, is the applicant going to renovate the property? Regardless of whether or not the warrant article passes a town meeting?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so my next question is, construction easement only. Has the applicant obtained all the necessary permits to begin construction?
I don't believe yet. He is about to apply to the Building Department, but he's not applied yet.
Okay, so what you're asking for is for access to the back of the building when the permits have been granted?
Correct.
Yes, I guess, yeah.
Alright, so my next question is, did you explore coming into that back of the property through the ice cream factory and next to the town building and accessing the property through that? In other words, in alter, what alternatives were explored for accessing the back of the property?
I think I can answer that and Kevin chime in if you want, but I think the, that approach was discounted because the number of parking spaces and areas that would be eliminated by the ice cream factory, for the ice cream factory to access it that way.
Eliminated.
As you can see, you can see, I think, a couple of tables there at the end and plus there's parking there. For a vehicle to go through the ice cream factory's parking lot, you'd be eliminated that, those tables and that which are used by the ice cream factory patrons.
Okay, because I, to me, that's just a much shorter access, but I know that they have, you know, they run a business. I guess my, as does Town Hall. So I guess if the, my fellow Selectmen were to agree to do this with me, if all three of us were to agree, I would want to allow the access once all permits have been granted. And I would want the hours at which the trucks can go in and out of the Town Hall parking lot to be before Town Hall hours and after Town Hall hours and pretty much anytime on Saturday would be fine, but, and then I would also want to make sure that there's some sort of insurance or, you know, should anything happen in the parking lot or damage that parking lot? I mean, I can understand wanting to go through the back of the building to be able to renovate and I'm not opposed to that, but I do think we have to consider the fact that we also, we, the town also run a business at Town Hall and that things are going to be picking up once we open the building, seeing the end of the COVID situation coming into play. And, you know, it's busy back there anyway. So, and we do have, do we keep ambulances in that garage?
I don't think they, I don't think.
Do that anymore? So what, what do we use the garage for? So I would say as long as it was before business hours and after business hours, so you could get your equipment in in the morning and, you know.
Madam Chair, I just, I think that would be, well, in my opinion, I think that'd be very difficult for anybody, even contractors, to say, look, we got to be there before nine o'clock. We can't. I think that would really be a hindrance on anybody, you know, because they couldn't come through there if they had to leave to go get supplies. That I think would be a little tough.
Oh, I'm thinking of heavy equipment, not cars. I'm thinking of if you're bringing in a backhoe or a crane or a digger, I'm not thinking about cars. You know, if you, you're going to jump into a truck to go to the ice cream factory or whatever, you can do that. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about heavy equipment going in and out. That could be disruptive.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I think, you know, any heavy equipment, certainly like a crane, if a crane were necessary for those trees or a backhoe or with something, that could be done, right, Kevin? That they could arrange to get there before.
That makes sense.
The only thing that I would request would be that, you know, if a person, you know, an electrician is coming in with his van, that that wouldn't be limited to before Town Hall business hours because it would be essentially not much more than a personal vehicle and trying to get scheduled people to only come before nine o'clock, I think, would be difficult for the tradespeople.
That was my point, John, that we have to allow.
That, that's fine, I'm good with that for tradespeople, but not in anything bigger than a van. I wouldn't want that going in and out of Town Hall.
I mean, as long as it can be off on his property, so if they do need a crane, that they don't set some crane up on town property to work off the back of the property. That'd be my only concern.
Okay, I see that we have a chat here from Donna Howard. She says they parked the senior van in that garage. So that is one thing that goes in and out of there during the day. So I wouldn't want that to be blocked and it looks like you could actually put two parking spaces right here if in fact these lot lines are correct. You know, that could be temporarily designated for tradespeople. Is that, I mean, you can't see mine, but.
I think the big issue would be a crane for the trees. And I think I talked to a tree company and they're, they're saying it would take eight hours to do it or six to eight hours is what they said, so I think that would be the most difficult thing.
Couldn't that be operated from the front?
No.
Of the building?
No.
You wouldn't want a crane going over, the only way you could get at it would be the Town Hall front lawn. Yeah, you wouldn't want that.
What I would like to do in the interest of moving things forward is to allow the Selectmen to consider and at our first meeting in April, we can take a vote on this.
Well, I know certainly you folks may want to pass it by Town Council with respect to any documentation as far as a license. But for insurance coverage.
Right, for insurance. Alright, so Jim, we can talk and run this by Town Council and think about what would be reasonable for operating hours. And I would want to make this, you know, agreement to be, you know, to start at the time that, when all permits are in hand.
Okay. I guess, obviously, the board won't be meeting for three weeks then. Kevin, I don't know. Are you able to at least access from the front of the building for a time being? Because I know you want to get going on things.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of tied to a lease, so, you know, I got to get this guy in there by July, so I, I don't know. I mean, what are our choices?
Well, let me ask you a question. The, the restaurant right beside there, they backed them, tracked the trailers down to bring in food and deliveries to Cliffs. Have you spoke with him, by the picture, can someone, Jim, who had that picture up?
Those, Jim did, yeah.
Second place, alright. So if you look at the picture, they have that driveway that comes in. Would he allow you just to back, you know, go right behind it? Doesn't look like there's much there.
I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure his crane's big enough to reach that far, to be completely honest with you. I mean, we could.
Needs temporary to stop, right?
He's got a beautiful backyard back there, I hate to destroy it all. I mean, if we have to wait till April, I guess I got to deal with it from the street.
I would just suggest, you know, you maybe don't need to take the trees down immediately, right, Kev?
Yeah, I understand things take time, we have to get going.
I guess I would like to move the meeting forward. So if we could take this under advisement, talk to Adam about what the town might want to require and we'll put this on the agenda for the April, I think it's the sixth meeting. Maybe it's the one, two, three, four, five, it's the sixth, for the April sixth meeting.
Okay, and I will try, Madam Chairwoman and Board, to perhaps forward a draft of a license agreement with, you know, insurance provisions, so the Town Council isn't having to prepare it from scratch, if you want.
Sure. You know, you can bring that and.
I'll give Adam a call and just see what he wants to do. He might have something that he's familiar with and he's got something he can prepare right away, but I'll give him a call.
Or Jim could give him a call, yeah.
And Madam Chair, we do actually have very recently now a license agreement document that was drafted by Town Council.
But that's for town property, that's a little bit different?
No, the same exact thing, you're permitting somebody to access town property, giving them.
Oh, through the, okay, yeah, I would, I would put other stipulations on that, but yes.
Yeah, but just I'm saying the legal.
Yeah, yeah, that works. Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to 3.1, appointments of officials and personnel, discuss vote, appointment to the position of Neshova Valley Vocational Technical High School Committee. Did we receive a candidate for that, Jim?
I have not received anything in the office. Just was asked to put it on the agenda, but I've not seen anything come in. I don't know if Kathy is still with us. Let me stop screen sharing.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's still, she's muted.
Have you seen anything come in for the show with Jack's school committee?
Alright, I think in that case, we can move this to our work session on the 30th. Alright, moving on to.
Madam Chairwoman, if I might, I understood that this was going to be convened as a meeting of the committee to appoint.
Oh, okay. If you have, yes.
So I, I just, just want to make sure that we don't get our eyes crossed and find out who's contacting who for the next time. I mean.
That's right. Yeah, you are the appointing committee, so.
Well, I'm the, well, you guys are, and the, I don't know, is anyone here from the school committee? Because I, I had understood that they were, the school committee was notified, our members to the school committee. And I, I know Neshoba sent out the letter to the current incumbent Karen Chapman to, to suggest that she should contact either myself or someone on the committee to indicate whether she's interested. And I'm surprised that we haven't received anything, quite frankly, but I just want to point that out. And obviously, we don't have any candidates. There's not much we could do now. And if we don't have the school committee members here, so I'm just throwing that out now since I'm not muted. Is there anybody else out there?
So I guess the question is, this is procedural then. Do you convene a meeting outside of the Board of Selectmen's meeting to make this nomination?
No, we, we do it traditionally, we've done it within the Selectmen's meeting.
Okay, so, all right. So then we have a work session scheduled for the 30th. We weren't going to do any appointments on that day. However, because this appointment runs out on the 31st of March.
Right.
And I, I know that if Karen is the person, she's on the Budget Committee for Neshoba. And it is budget season. So if you, John, could reach out to your committee and make sure they are here, Jim, we could put this on the agenda for the 30th. And, you know, and see that if, if there are any postings or whomever you are nominating.
Okay.
That would be wonderful.
I'll do that.
This on the agenda tonight because I thought we might have someone.
Hopefully, but.
Okay.
Have to try again.
All right, we'll move on then to.
Thank you.
Thank you. 3.2 is to discuss and vote on appointing me to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. We appointed Carol Hofse's last meeting. So this would put a second member on. We are awaiting appointments from five other commissions, and there are still two at-large positions. So I would be filling an at-large position. So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Veronica Kell to the O R P Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Go Shank, aye.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. The next is to discuss the appointment of Jennifer Eaton to the position of Conservation Administrative Assistant, contingent upon a Corey check medical exam with a one-year probationary period. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Jennifer Eaton to the position of the Conservation Administrative Assistant, contingent upon a Corey check medical exam with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a?
Second.
A discussion, any discussion? Jim, were you able to talk to Jennifer and make sure that she was able to file the paperwork that was necessary?
I did not get a chance to speak with her, but I did speak with the Chair of the Commission, who's on the call. And she believed that Jennifer had everything squared away. So perhaps out of an abundance of caution, the appointment to be conditioned upon her having taken necessary steps to resolve any conflict that may exist with the, the dual capacity as a commissioner and an employee.
All right, can we update the motion to make a contingent?
Make a contingent upon her filing all the necessary paperwork that she needs, so there'll be no conflict of interest problems.
Second?
No, second the amended motion.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. Welcome, Jennifer. And congratulations to the Conservation Commission for having at least some support going forward. All right.
I have to say, she's gonna be a wonderful addition. So thank you, thank you.
Glad to hear that. Moving on to 3.4, do I have a motion to appoint Heidi Roy Chocat and Andrew Gordon to the position of Perdium Firefighter Paramedic?
I make a motion, we appoint Heidi Roy Chocat and Andrew Gordon to the position of Perdium Firefighter Paramedic, contingent upon a Corey check medical exam with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Oh, any discussion before we go forward? Nope, hearing none. All those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. I, I guess the next one is 3.5, the Municipal Hearings Officer that we appointed or we discussed last time. I, I was wondering if there had been any appointment come in today for this, a name?
I didn't see anything come in, Madam Chair.
Okay, I did talk to Eric and I know he had, had a discussion with one candidate and he was waiting to hear back from another. But I didn't get anything from him today. And if you didn't, Jim?
If I might.
Yes, John.
One of the candidates, I think, was me.
Yes.
And I did talk with Eric this afternoon, and I, I did tell him I would be willing to do it. And I'm not sure if you folks have other candidates, you know, I do it just a interim. I know Jim, you know, if Jim wants to do it, more power to him. But it might, I think it would jive with, as long as, as long as the workload wasn't too hard, it would jive with my duties as moderator, I think, in some respects. I don't think it would, obviously, if, there, there could be some conflicts, which I'd have to step aside. But they don't happen very often, so I'm willing to do it if, if you folks want. And I know there is some training coming up. I think I pretty much could do it anyways. But there's training specific to this coming up on April 6th, which I was planning on enrolling if you wanted to have me do it.
All right.
I'd make a motion to re- appoint John Barrett on to the Municipal Hearing Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, just, John, you are the person that Eric told me yesterday he was waiting to hear back from, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wasn't able to get back to him yesterday, but I did call him today and I told him I, I was willing to do it.
All right, in that case, all those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, John. Thank you for stepping up.
All righty, I, I may have to sign off, although I know there's some cemetery park matters coming up. I'm not sure if that's in your work session, so if I would be allowed to speak. But I know I probably won't be able to stick around till then, but I just wanted to raise some concerns about.
Which item number on the agenda are you?
The property, the position descriptions. And I know Jim has been working on this, so I don't know if he can.
I can shed some light very quickly, so you can go if it's okay, Madam Chair.
Are we gonna move down and take 5.3.3 at this point?
We don't really need to, just, just to tell John that it was conveyed to me by Roger, the superintendent, that the commission did take up the provision in the job description that had said three to five years, unlike the other superintendent positions in town that say five to seven. And with that one change, there is a document later in the meeting tonight that we'll be seeking the Boards of Selectmen's authorization to accept a reclassification of the position from the grade D to the grade F, and that would make it consistent with the other superintendent positions in town.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, basically, we're concerned that Roger, we feel is the superintendent of our department, oversees, you know, five to six employees. So we just felt that there was a, a little glitch there. If that's been resolved, I, no further comments then.
So you are in favor of it, John?
Yes, yes, reclassify, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you. Moving on to meeting business, section 4.1, Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals referral request for 12 Dudley Road Senior Center Expansion Project. This is the typical referral that comes in from the Planning Board. When there is a project going on, they're looking for the Board of Selectmen's comments. And the plans were in the packet, so to speak. So any discussion on this? I believe that they're looking for a referral comment.
Yeah, I think it's well time to move forward with this project. And I think the Board should support it and give it a favorable nod ahead, and let's move on.
Wayne?
I have nothing to add. I think we've, I agree with Joe.
I, I would agree with that. So I think that on the referral, Jim, you, it should be noted that the Board of Selectmen support this project 100%. And we are looking forward to the Senior Center expansion being completed.
Gotcha.
All right, moving on to 4.2, the Chapter 90 project request. This is for, this is from the Highway Department for resurfacing of Canal Street up to Mason Street and Greenville Road. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Jim, I think it's up to the poor farm. Is that right? The break of Mason Road, Greenville Road?
Yeah, two, two point, let's just say 2.2 miles.
Yes.
It's, it's actually a little farther. It's up to the, the bridge that's being replaced. I, I just talked to the Highway Superintendent today. They're gonna replace that bridge, then they're gonna finish the project all the way up to the Greenville Line later this year.
Okay, so that's, that's a different Chapter 90 request, though.
That'll be the follow-up.
That'll be a follow-on from the bridge on up. Okay. So I think we just need a, a vote to approve this, to sign off on it. So is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the Highway Resurfacing Plan, Chapter 90 money.
For Canal Street.
Al Street, Mason Road, Greenville Road, 2.2 miles north from Route 119.
Is there a second?
I will happily second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, moving on to the Senior Center. This is 4.3, Senior Center Proposed Reopening Plan. And there should be in your packet, I'm looking for mine. There should be a wow, in all the paper, I don't know what happened to it. There should be a paper in your packet that describes the, oh, here it is, the reopening plan. So I guess at this point, Karen, I see you're on the call. I, I would like to invite you to speak if that is all right with Joe and Wayne.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Madam Chair, other selectmen, thank you for having me. With the state moving towards Step 1 and Phase 4, we would like to consider reopening the Senior Center much in the same way we did in October. We would follow very strict protocol, one way in, one way out, six-foot distances, masks still required, limited capacity. If we, in our April newsletter, I am proposing that we have no more than two small programs a day. We will not do congregant meals. We will continue to do meals as drive-throughs. We will use Plexiglas partitions as needed. No outside food will be allowed and no food will be served within the Senior Center. Any beverages that are brought in, water bottles have to be enclosed. And staff will clean program spaces thoroughly as needed. We won't encourage any loitering within the building. And if people want to visit outside the building, that's fine with us. We have had some from the state that a larger percentage of our elderly population has been vaccinated than we anticipated at this point. And it seems to be getting better every week. There are still those that are having a hard time getting vaccinations. But I think things are looking, moving forward and looking positive. So we would like to ask that we can open the Senior Center again, starting in April.
I, I have a question, Karen.
Sure.
I, I don't see any, you say limited capacity in there. Is there a number?
The way we did it in October is it was based on square footage. I don't remember what it was, but for example, for exercise programs, you have to have 12 to 14 feet between individuals. We marked that out and taped it in the room. Only exercise programs were allowed in the meeting hall itself. As far as other programs, it was a six-foot distance between people. And we do have air purifiers for large spaces in all the rooms that are being used. Does that help?
Vaguely enough, yes.
Any other?
Leave me, we're the last people that want anybody to get sick.
I think it's encouraging that so many people have been vaccinated. It's so, even though these are the things that were put in place, the situation is a little more positive now than it was in the fall.
But as with everything else, we will still require masks to be worn until there is a herd immunity, just for the safety.
Yes. So will you be doing, I know before, and I'm looking for this on here, it might be on here, and I just missed it. Will you be doing the, the temperature checks and the questions as you were doing previously?
We will be. I am referring to other directors as to the, what the questions need to be redressed as. They'll definitely be different than they were in the past, you know. Now that things are opening up more, we're not gonna be asking people if they gathered in groups of 10 or more, because it makes a difference whether or not their groups have been vaccinated, et cetera. But we will be using the, the correct protocol that the state requires.
All right. So any other questions, Wayne or Joe?
I'm good.
All right, do I have a motion to go forward with opening the, the Senior Center?
I made the motion, we reopen the Senior Center effectively starting tomorrow.
Well, it would be the first of April. Thank you, though.
Is there a second?
Oh, goodness.
I'll send a second, the corrected motion.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
I just, I did have one.
Oh, go ahead.
If there is a positive, will the Shoba Valley still be doing the contact tracing for you guys and?
Oh, yes, we will make sure contact tracing is done, absolutely.
Okay, just didn't see it in there. I want to make sure, so.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Karen. The next one is 4.4. This is the Budget Project Request from Senator Cronin that we all received. I know that in the fall, Wayne and I. I know that in the fall, Wayne and I at least had done this with Senator Tran, but this is a new request. So I think that what they're asking for, Jim, is this the same as before? Three projects that we might like to see going forward?
Yes, with a priority listing, so ranking the the top three.
Okay, so Wayne and Joe, have you had time to think of this?
I have, haven't come up with any great ideas. Based on what we've looked at in the previous pieces of it. Trying to think.
Yeah.
What did we, what was usually involved before?
So the last, the last three we did was the the common, which we got, we do in the sidewalks. So it's ongoing right now. There was talk of the Hart Public Library renovation, which is a rather large endeavor. I don't know if we'd ever get that one, and I'm drawing a blank on the third, Jim.
We had talked in the fall, I thought, on the shared streets and spaces, the placemaking grant that we put in for behind the town hall for the farmer's market and parking and the exercise space or the play space back there. We had also talked about sidewalks, although I don't remember exactly which sidewalk project I put in then. And then, what was the third one?
That's what I'm drawing a blank on.
It might have been master plan implementation. Was that the other one, Jim? I I have three. Jim, you're muted, I think. Not sure.
I think one that would really be big is sidewalks from the center to the high school. I I really think that's very important.
We do have, and Jim, I don't know if you were able to find this, so this is the one that was on my list as well. I thought we had surveyed already from Route thirteen down to the DPW building, that we have a shovel ready project for that. Do we have the survey data for that as well?
My understanding is that we did have the survey data done. I don't have it. It's being sought through Weston and Sampson now. But there's another issue that has come up, which is it has to have been completed within a certain period of time to the project. So it may need to be refreshed anyway. Because there could have been changes in ownership of parcels. So just, we're moving forward with it, obviously.
So that's one that we could put in for. The second one that we could put in for is against sidewalks, and it's from South Street to the Harbor Church. And I know that that was laid out by Weston and Sampson, but I don't think they ever did the survey. That would be to support the bike trail, the piece that goes from the one side of South Street where it's actually the rail trail. And then they go up onto the sidewalk, up to the Harbor Church, and then back into the rail trail where the trail actually was.
Discussion already on that, when that whole rail trail thing was going on, that they were going, that was their whole plan anyway. So that was all part of their project, I believe, right?
I don't think it can be because it is state highway. I'm not sure.
Was the only way that they were going to be able to continue that bike trail to get across South Street because they couldn't go over the vessels right behind them houses. So maybe I'm wrong in my thinking, but I thought that was the the full plan, that that's how that was going to come out. And they were going to do that.
I know that we, the town, have from Weston and Sampson a a plan on that that surfaced during the current shared streets and spaces work. Are you saying, Joe, that you thought the rail trail was paying for those?
Well, that's what I thought, but maybe wrong, but that was part, they were going to have that done. I thought that was in the discussion. I may be totally wrong on that, but right by the church, and they were going to come right down in front of the Martins home, go right, cut right up across the street, right at that intersection.
Yep, that that is the project, and there's a drawing from Weston and Sampson that the town has for that. So I don't know where the payment was coming from, but it's certainly something that could be considered. And the third one that I have is, again, it it deals with sidewalk and traffic control. It's for the sidewalk in front of Honeyland Farm. The consultant that the shared streets and spaces grant worked on came up with a lovely drawing to redo that sidewalk to make it fit more in with the character of the historic district than a paved, open curb cut area on that corner. So they put, so, you know, in order to prevent cars from cutting through there, you would put a curb cut sidewalk and then redo the sidewalks oh, at Depot Street, instead of putting it right in front of the Anderson's where the sidewalk right now, the crosswalk goes right into a set of steps. We would move the crosswalk down further east, more east on Route one nineteen and cross over at Depot Street, which is the corner of their parking lot now. Because the parking lot is there now in the past. I think people probably parked on the common. So, yeah. There's a concept for an island that I didn't give you, Jim. I don't know if you have it, but yeah, you have up Mr. Mapper. So if you could take your cursor and bring it across that yellow crosswalk. So we would redo that, put in ADA compliance, and then come all the way across the Honeyland Farms right there. There would be sidewalk put in there with entries for cars in and out. And then the the concept she showed extended all the way down to right about where your cursor was, Jim, where the sidewalk starts right there. So the sidewalk would go all the way down to there, and then the crosswalk would be over to Depot Street in that vicinity. And then to continue on down the street, they proposed an island in between, between Mr. Mike's and McNabb's, to put a small center island for pedestrians in there and redo that crosswalk. So that's another concept for sidewalks and redo the sidewalk in front of Mr. Mike's there. So which would make that part of town a little more inviting and more walking friendly. So those are the three projects, all all sidewalks, that I would put in for Senator Cronin. So do we have to rank? I mean?
That's the way it's been done in the past. Some of the trends specifically had asked. Senator Cronin is just looking for your wishes. So he didn't state that they should be ranked, but that's how they've been done in the past.
Okay. So Joe and Wayne, what do you guys think?
I I I think the sidewalk down one nineteen from the center, right down to the high school is where we really should be looking.
I agree. I mean, we've looked at that project years, I believe. I remember one of the first town meetings I went, ever went to. That was discussed.
I I I wouldn't argue that. I would say we already have survey data all the way down to DPW. And I would, depending on the amount of money that involves, I would like to see it extend at least to Old Meeting House Road so that you could walk a a circle with the rail trail and along one nineteen. That would be kind of nice. I would ideally love to see it go all the way down to the high school, which would include then the South Row Road and Harbor Church piece. So my my second would be to support the rail trail and put it in there. And my third would be the walkability in the center of town.
I'll go along with that.
So do we need a motion, Jim?
Yes, please.
All right, so is is there a motion?
I make a motion that we do three sidewalk projects, as we discussed. One in the center of town. Second one, to bring it from the center of town down to the South Street our street, and then continue to the high school.
So is is the first one, the walkability in the center of town, like Honeyland Farms and Mr. Mike's?
And then the second is to continue it from there down towards the high school.
All right.
Then the third one would be at the South Street, going from there to the high school.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
Madam Chair, on this issue too, with the stimulus money that's come out and some of the work that's being done in the House right now on a public works grant program, similar to what happened with ARA projects back in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine timeframe, having this work done and these things shovel ready will be a great benefit when and if those funds roll out because we'd be able to pick up these sidewalks without batting an eye. So this is great.
When I read the MMA thing, I was wondering if any of those funds can be used for roads, for paving roads. From what I read, it didn't look like it. It looked like infrastructure. So sidewalks would fit, water projects would fit.
They'll do under the road, but you're responsible for the
The road itself. Okay, I I was just curious. All right, thank you. Wayne, did you, were you going to?
If I understood something, that a lot of the projects and the governor's next piece is infrastructure, which include roads. That's the information I've been given.
Where did you see that?
I can't remember where. I I saw an article, I don't know if it was just a proposal or not, but it there was a a big push, if you will, to get more money from the chapter ninety.
I I was referring to the MMA, the
Oh, I know, it's it's not going to be chapter ninety. It's kind of, I can't remember what the, I'll have to look for it.
Okay, all right. So, all right, center of town, the Route thirteen to and South Street. Okay, moving on. There we are, the grants. Four point five point one, the Council on Aging Formula Grant Acceptance and Execution. I I assume this just needs a motion to accept. Is that correct?
This is standard every year. It's normally something that I I would have just executed in due course, but there's been an interest in having these come before the board level, so wanted to make certain to do that.
Okay, do we need a motion then, Jim, or is it just?
A motion to to accept and execute the state formula grant for the council on aging in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept Council on Aging Formula Grant Acceptance and Execute for sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. Moving on to four point five point two, we are going to, I don't know the right word for that. Pass over that, table it. The, it's for the thirteen maps in the open space plan that will most likely need to be revised. And the and we may need to do more community outreach to update that plan. So my thought was to apply for the third round, which closes on March twenty-third of DLTA. On my RPC, got only two two requests for round two of DLTA. But I read their request, their services requirements, and it doesn't really fit in what they are asking for for this round. So I thought perhaps we will hold off. There could potentially be a fourth round in April and wait until more people are on the board, on the committee to update that document. So I am, unless one of you has, you know, something to say on that, we're going to pass over it.
We're good.
All right, thank you. Moving on to four point five point three, this is the Wild and Scenic River Community Grant. And again, similar to the Shared Streets and Spaces grant application, this came out of the townwide grant meeting on January seventh. The two projects that we decided as a town to go forward with was shared streets and spaces. And we hope to hear positively on that grant on March thirty-first. We did submit that after the last Board of Selectmen meeting on March fifth. The Wild and Scenic Rivers Community Grant is part of the Stewardship Council for the Wild and Scenic, Nashua Rivers Wild and Scenic Program. You can get up to five thousand dollars. So we are looking at the Adams Dam area. Which, if I know that there are a couple people in the committee on this call. So if someone other than me wants to talk about it. But if you're good, Emmy, I'm looking at you. If you're good with me talking.
I got it, if you want. So the Adams Dam area, we are facing a couple of challenges with it. Ecologically, the wear and tear, just from nature, is a big deficit. But we're also facing some serious problems with the environment due to vehicles and access. And so what we're really looking for in this first grant is to address those issues. The ground wear and tear, the damage to the trees in that area, the land mass in that area, the the banks, the erosion there is all pretty heavy duty. I mean, it's 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 sad, really. And it really is directly attributed to the vehicles, the heavy vehicles that are going in and out of that area, and they shouldn't be. It's not a vehicle right away. It's a trail. So in previous years, there was chains up, there was a gate up at one point in time. And this grant is really looking to go back into that area and shore up some of the areas with boulders that are being eroded currently, as well as closing off the the enter, the vehicle access from the back of Farmers Exchange. That's being used as a as a car right of way, I guess you could say, and it's going all the way down to the fishing point and beyond. And it's just wearing away the banks, and as I said, damaging the trees. So we're looking to put up a barrier there. As well as, as I said, some rails and boulders along the side of the bank going into the river for safety sake, again, and to protect what we still have left there for for the bank itself. Did I miss anything, Veronica?
The one thing I would add is the walkway from, so from the back of the Jeff Street parking in the shared streets and spaces, we're going to start advertising that as parking for the town. And there is a a walkway that comes from the back of that lot. Jim, you had it right with your cursor, right in that back corner. So the walkway is close to the river. We want to move the walkway further to the left, and we're working with Cemetery and Parks. I will say that the Cemetery and Parks Board voted in their meeting last week in favor of this project. So Roger and his crew will be doing all the work. Roger and Drew have been involved with this from the start. So they'll be doing the work to move that trail away from the river so that if you're walking in from the parking lot, you aren't in danger of sliding down the bank or adding more sediment to the river through erosion. The gate will be right around the end of that, of your red mark there. You can kind of see there's a parking area. So come down, yeah, right in there. There's kind of a clearing up from that truck. I think that's a truck. Up a little bit, yeah, there's a clearing. And the gate will go, so take your cursor the other way. You're on the red marker right there. That is the parking area. So the boulders will go in from the river to keep trucks from going right up to the river in that area. And the gate will be right across the red line right there to prevent trucks from driving in. We are going to try to put in two handicap spots right there, and we'll have the boulders on either side of the gate to allow strollers or wheelchairs or access to the river for people who are differently able. So there, there you have it. That's pretty much the first. for um people who are differently able. So um, there, there you have it. That's pretty much the first part. We will be filing a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. This is priority habitat. The, not the parking lot, but the rest of this um project. And this is part of the first phase of a maybe four to five-year project. You only get five thousand dollars per year. So the second phase that we would apply for next year um would be to have a consultant to work with the town to see what could be done to restore the bank. Um, so that's, you know, what is necessary because the, the bank is getting washed out there.
Any questions?
I'm good.
So that is it. The, it's due in on April first. We don't have to have permits by then. We just have to um, uh, let the um, the uh committee, the stewardship committee know that we will be applying for the port permits and that the work will be done if it is permitted. So that's the plan. All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, uh, budget presentation and meetings. So, oh, before we do move on, wait, Jim, one, one more thing. Um, what I would like is a vote to have because we don't meet again before this has to go in. I would like a vote from the Board of Selectmen so that people who hear about this project understand that it is a town-sponsored project. That it isn't just a single person or people uh putting this in, that it is town um endorsed, so.
What, what a motion that we continue with the Wild and Scenic River Community Grant.
For phase one.
Phase of the Adams Dam area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Emily, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Thank you. All right, so our, our next is five point one point one. Um, this is budget with um Council on Aging followed by Recreation. So Jim, it's all yours.
Madam Chair, um, we've spent some time talking about this. Um, the budget that you see in front of you, Council on Aging uh takes up the middle part of the screen here. So this section right here is Council on Aging. It looks a little different than most budgets you'll see this year, given that um, the budget for the current year is one twenty-two, two ninety-two, and the proposed is about twenty thousand dollars higher. Um, the council made a very compelling case as to why they thought restructuring and reorganizing the way they provide service in the senior center, particularly with an aging population and even more so in the, the times of COVID warranted this. So the, the request has made it through to this point in the budget process. I believe Karen is still on. Um, and I'd welcome her to be able to, to speak to it, but uh, one last point is, um, all of the wages that you see are Collins Center, and in addition to Collins Center implementation, which was um the discussion of the last meeting, which is placing positions in the closest two but higher than um step in their respective grade in the compensation plan. This version that you see tonight is actually Collins Implementation with a minimum of two percent for everybody. So this is a little bit higher than the version that we spent time with on Saturday. Um, I did take the, um, the initiative over the last couple of days to roll all of the um, the positions that did not come up with a minimum of two percent under the implementation proper and make those adjustments. So these are uh Collins plus a minimum of two.
Did, uh, Jim, um, did you do that across the board then for all?
Budget, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep, and I'll, I'll be sending that off tonight. Um, there are a couple of things that, that I need to clean up before I send it out, but I'll send it to the select board and the finance committee this evening, so you guys can, can um start poking around at it.
Okay.
So Karen. Hi. Um, so I think Jim explained it very well. One, one thing that we've realized with especially this last year, but we've um realized it before is that one thing that the Senior Center is very in need of is somebody with a social work background. Our, our current program coordinator, Katie Petrosi, has been filling a lot of that, um, those, those needs. Um, she has applied for uh multiple and received multiple grants for the Senior Center in the last uh four or five years that she's been with us. And so one of the things I'm asking for is that she be reclassified as an Assistant Director and Program Coordinator, and we'll discuss that later on in the uh meeting as well. Um, but we also would like to have a Social Services Coordinator or Outreach Coordinator brought on uh for fifteen hours a week. Um, it uh, multiple reasons, and the reason I'm hesitant is because there are so many things going on here. Right now, the senior population in Townsend is twenty-eight percent of the population. Within the next ten years, that will go up to closer to forty percent of the population. Currently, of those older people, only three and a half percent are over eighty. That will go over ten percent in the next ten years, and within the next five years, all but one of the staff members that are currently at the Senior Center will retire. So, we need to start reorganizing the Senior Center before it's too late. And this is the perfect time to do it. We also realized that within the last five years, our meals programs have gone up five hundred and seventy-one percent. Our programs have go, gone up, except for the COVID year, um, between a hundred and ten and thirty-five percent. Um, we're just, before COVID hit, we were bursting at the seams. One reason why we're getting an expansion. And we do anticipate that as soon as we open our doors again, they'll be knocking, knocking them down. So um, that shows, that is, shows very well for the town of Townsend. We have a premier senior center, and we want to keep it that way, and we want to reach out to more of our population through outreach and providing the programs that will keep our seniors healthy and keep our seniors vibrant in their later years. And so in order to do that, we are reorganizing or asking to reorganize. Are there any specific questions? Um, I know that was kind of all over the place. I haven't been feeling well, so I'm trying to do my best.
Any questions, Joe or Wayne? I, I know we'll talk about these positions later on in the meeting.
Please, Madam, Madam Chair, um, what you have on your agenda to talk about a number of positions, one of them being Council on Aging, the um, the proposed combined position of program um, and uh Assistant Director. Um, that one is not in your packet. I was not able to get that one taken care of in time for the packets. I've actually done the work. Um, I'm prepared to speak to it if you thought it appropriate, but um, it is not in the packet. So we could uh take it up very briefly, um, either at the work session or at the next meeting. It wouldn't go into effect until the next budget year anyway, based on funding. So there's, you know, there's no absolute rush to do it, but um, I had communicated to Karen that I was hopeful to get it done um by the end of the week last week.
So uh, let me just look at, so should we talk about these positions at this point, Jim? Or should we go on to the next budget and then come back when we were gonna be looking at positions?
Well, we have, we have all of the positions, um, the, the ones that are specific to um new job descriptions and reclassification requests on the agenda later tonight. So um, I think, I think it's, it's ju, it's fair to say that the proposal that the Council on Aging has come forward with and Karen supports regarding Katie's position is important, and I've done the, I've done the work up on it, and um, it does, it does exactly what you expected it would do, Karen, in terms of level of responsibility. So um, I, I don't think there's, it's not in your packet. So I, I guess we shouldn't take that one up specifically tonight.
Okay, so we'll move that to April first, I guess, that discussion.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, anything else to say about the budget? Anything else that um you want to point out here? That's the personnel piece. What about otherwise?
Otherwise, it's level funded.
Level funded, okay. Um, do we need to vote to accept this, Jim, or is it just what it is?
Yeah, uh, once you get to the end of the process on the Saturday sessions we're doing, you'd be looking at adopting the budget in total at that point. So this is just, it, it's even more for the public to be able to see this than you because you're living with this stuff every Saturday. Um, so it's really just the department's opportunity to speak to the public about it.
And I'd like to thank everybody for all their support over COVID. We've been very busy, and we've gotten a lot of uh letters and, and emails of support, and I want to, on the behalf of our staff, I want to thank everybody for that.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in. Um, anything else before we let Karen?
Rest.
Enjoy her evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, Recreation. So I know Emmy's here.
Yes, um, Re- Recreation, Madam Chair, uh, is a, a, a very modest budget. Um, you'll note that the current year is uh in total forty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Uh, the request is to um add the fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollar position um, right here that I'm highlighting, which is funding the um, the Assistant Director position.
Okay.
Um, part-time position, and some of the history uh predates my involvement in town, but um, you know, there's a recreation revolving fund into which um revenues that are generated through the performance of programming. So if you have a, an event and there's a five dollar cost and somebody pays their five dollars, it goes into the recreation revolving account. Those funds have been used historically to pay for um either at, at some point uh in, in time in total, but recently in part of the total program. Um, over the course of the last year, particularly with COVID, the inability to hold the number of programs that had historically been being able to be held, dried up the, um, the, the funds coming into the revolving account. So they're at a point now where, um, if we wish Recreation to continue, um, which I would strongly suggest that uh, that we do, and we should, um, we're being asked to step up a little bit more on the town budget side by that roughly fifteen thousand dollars this year. So Emmy, I, I don't know if you're on, if you have anything additional to offer?
Um, I am. I um, yeah, Recreation is um vital to the community. And this year was extremely difficult, as you all know. Recreation kept plugging through the, the entire thing. Within a week of COVID hitting, we were up and running with um community programming online. Uh, the social emotional growth of this community uh rests largely in part with the Recreation Department. Um, it has to do with holistic wellness. And um, you know, we've been working tirelessly. I've been working tirelessly for the last eight years to really um grow Recreation to be able to fit into um very diverse areas of need in the community. And uh, with the addition of the Assistant Director, we were really looking, again, prior to COVID, we were really looking at a huge amount of um growth, like a huge amount. We, you know, our summer rec program alone, you know, we were, we went from an average of fifty-six point seven kids in two thousand eighteen to eighty-three kids a day in um two thousand nineteen, which is just a huge jump. And um, we've been seeing it with all of our programs as they were rolling out rec kids was getting more and more popular, and we were looking at even possibly needing more space. So uh, getting an Assistant Director in to assist with that administrative and creatives that we can keep growing these programs and be able to reach more and more of our community members. Um, we just really think that this is a vital, vital need, uh, not just a want. It's not just fun and games. This is truly a need within our community.
I, I think, I think it's real that, you know, we try to support that program and do what we have to do as a board to make sure that the rec program is funded, and they have the amount of people to take care of the children that are involved in that program safely.
Thank you, Joe. I did want to make note that the seasonal infractional employees that we have for individual programs will still be funded through those programs. We're not looking to fund our entire staff. We're only looking for the two administrative positions that have to exist in order for the programs to exist, I guess is the best way to put it. So those will still be funded through, the supplies will still be funded through, um, you know, wear and tear will still be funded in the programs themselves.
Um, so Jim, can I ask a question? Um, the, the uh announcement from MMA that came out this week, is it possible to, that said you could use some of the funds once they're made available to towns? Should we get those funds? I, I would imagine that rec had a decrease in revenues due to significant decrease due to COVID. Um, and I read that so, funds could be used to supplement or to take care of decrease in revenue. Do you think, it's just an idea, you don't have to answer yes or no at this point, but would, would we be able as a town to say we had a decrease in revenue because we weren't able to run these programs? Um, and could we assign some of those funds to this?
It, it's a little, it's a little more nerdy than, than that. Um, basically, at the beginning of the year, the Department of Revenue looks at what you project you're gonna make for revenue, and that they're holding you accountable, making sure you're not wildly projecting windfalls. And at the end of the year, when they um certify your free cash, they're checking again on the backside to see how well you did against your projections. What communities are seeing is that revenue is down for this coming year. So it's, it's more just generally being made available if you are running a deficit than the case of saying we should be able to apply it to X, Y, or Z specific program. But, but again, you, you read what I read. It's, it's just being proposed. It's not yet been.
Right.
Finalized, you know, their, the administration and finance are gonna create the regulations once the legislation is passed. So there's still a number of steps between here and what it actually looks like, but um, I think, one, one of the, one of the things that I think is important for us to look at is that the the, the CARES Act funds and to a certain degree, the additional money that we're gonna be getting is gonna come through that same vehicle, was clear that you can't use it to supplant something that you have budgeted, but you can use it to supplement your operations. So that's the, the kind of double-edged sword with funding this position. If we fund it through the tax levy in this budget, and it subsequently becomes available that we could use CARES Act funds for it, we wouldn't be able to because we have budgeted it.
I, I was thinking more about last year than about the coming years. I, I was wondering, you know, if it would be looked at as lost revenue. The funds that, that normally the um.
Oh, so you're wondering if we could use those funds to replenish the revolving account?
Correct.
Oh.
Uh, it's, it's just a thought. I mean, I don't know. Um, that's all. Okay.
Okay.
No, I'm all for this.
Excellent.
Thank you. I am, I did want to say thank you again to everybody that has been so supportive. I know I've got some parents on the call tonight. Um, and uh, some families and, and some individuals, and uh, the staff that we had through this past year especially has been exceptional in keeping us going and really paying attention and, and giving of themselves for this community. So um, and the support at Town Hall, same thing. So again, thank you guys so much for giving us this chance um to talk and for supporting us through the last, you know, few years.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Emily. I know you wanted to talk, so go ahead.
And I'll, I'll try to be quick. Um, I just wanted to make a couple additional points um that continuing to use the revolving fund for these salaries um prohibits the pro- prohibits the program for, well, prohibits the department from providing affordable programming for our residents, which is crucial. And, and also takes away the directors and the assistant directors' time from planning, researching and promoting the, the programs so that they could then run the programs, right? Well, that's what our seasonal infractional staff are there for. So it takes their time away from kind of planning the future of the department and the programs that they provide. And lastly, I just want to say that Jim, if you were to take a look at the, the account code that's currently under recreation, that is the revolving account code, not the town code. So I just want to make sure that even though we push this forward by, you know, in word, that we don't all of a sudden encumber our entire budget in the revolving fund accidentally.
So this, this O three, four is revolving?
Correct. That's my understanding. It should start with zero, zero, one, like all the other departments.
Okay, that, that's an excellent point, Emily. And ultimately, when the budget goes to town meeting, this column doesn't exist. These, these are really more a function of kind of the internal workings of, of, of making the sausage. What goes to town meeting are the, the line item descriptions and the dollar figures, but I'll make certain that we get that cleaned up just from an internal perspective. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else? Joe or Wayne? Any other comments?
No, I spoke my piece. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just very briefly, when Emmy said that this would be the town funding the two administrative positions, I don't want anyone to, to have heard that to mean that Emmy and this assistant are just sitting in their puffy comfy chairs, you know, sipping lattes and working on spreadsheets. They are working. They are participating. They are, you know, knee deep in the programs with the kids and, and I just wanted to make sure that people understood this isn't just about these being admin positions. They're doing all of the admin, plus they're actually boots on the ground too.
Good point.
Thank you for making that distinction there, Jim. So, all right. Thank you to the recreation department. We appreciate it. Do we need a vote, Jim, for the budget?
Nope. Once we get to the overall budget again.
Okay.
We contain within.
Perfect. All right. Moving on to what we're doing. The annual town meeting, the warrant review. I had a couple of things I wanted to mention there, but I'm going to let you go ahead because I I do need to. So go ahead, Jim, if you want to start with the preliminary warrant review.
Trying to get to that point. Okay. So, Madam Chair and members of the board, I took the opportunity to just very, in very draft or rough shape, put the articles that we had submitted by the March deadline into the form of a warrant. So you see in your packets at section five, two, one, the special town meeting warrant, which right now is nothing more than the two things that we regularly see. As you know, the, the special town meeting warrant is open until April 2nd. So there's still some time for more articles to be submitted here, but you have the prior fiscal year financial article. So if there's a bill that didn't make payment at the, the end of the last fiscal year, this would be the opportunity for town meeting to consider taking it up. Again, that's a usual and customary. Next, you see the snow and ice deficit. As of right now, we're sitting at around seventy five thousand dollars in deficit. And this too is something that with each special town meeting you see as an article. So from there, you get to the annual town meeting warrant and you have again, the usual and customary articles for appointments and reports. Article one is appointing any officers. Article two is hearing any reports from boards, committees, or commissions. Article three, choosing the, the West Townsend residents to serve on the Tucker Fund. And then the majority vote article for the revolving funds. So article four shows the revolving funds and it shows by fund, whose authority it is to spend, the revenue source, what the funds can be used for, and what the spending limits are. Next, you would get into the operating budget, which is something that we'll be talking about in a few more points down the agenda. From there, you see articles that are no longer numbered because I got sick of having to go back and retype them after I added more things. The usual and customary setting the compensation for any elected officers in town. So in the budget for instance, that had taken up, there would have been the town clerk, the elected town clerk salary is required to have this follow-up article to specifically approve any salary for an elected. The only other would be the salary, if you can call it that, of one dollar a piece that the elected water commissioner has received. So again, this is just a little bit of arcane Massachusetts local government voodoo that we do. Next, you get to the Water Enterprise Department budget. And this is the budget that's submitted by the Water Commissioners. And there is carved out within the article, you will see the portion of funds under the inter municipal expenses, which is the indirect costs that we talk about. So there's a total budget of a million, three ninety one, three hundred and one thousand of which is actually the water department paying for the expenses of things that are theirs that are carried within the town's budget and not within the enterprise budget. So this goes to that tab on the spreadsheet, the budget workbook sheet called enterprise, enterprise fund, where you see the, the, the mechanics of how this inter municipal transfer is, is calculated. Very quickly, for those following at home, you have the total amount of the town budget, and then you determine what percentage of the overall budget, the water department budget is. And then that percentage, which in this case is on about eleven percent, you apply that eleven percent to certain offices that the water department receives service from, and they are prescribed by the Department of Revenue to be admin, and then the financial offices. Additionally, you can do IT, which we had done historically, but when the water department took up their own IT contract, that was backed out. And then the direct costs for their insurances. So the insurance is for vehicles, for buildings, but more specifically the retirement expense for employees, the health insurance expense for employees, workers comp, and FICA for employees. So all of that is carried in that spreadsheet tab called enterprise funds. And that number gets carried forward into this article.
Jim, would it be possible for you to share your screen so we could see what you're looking at there? I know it's the warrant, but it might be easier.
Sure. Okay, can folks see that spreadsheet?
Yeah.
So what you're looking at here would be this column, which is projected fiscal twenty two. So the water expenditures, personnel, contractual, supplies, other capital and debt totaled a million, ninety thousand, which is the, the number that they net. There is the three hundred and one thousand for the indirect costs, which I'll get to at the bottom of the sheet in a moment, totaling the full one million, three ninety one that appears in the warrant article. So what does that three hundred and one thousand dollars by the water department? Again, the percentage calculation is eleven point one percent. So the water budget represents eleven point one percent of the total municipal budget. So eleven point one percent of the budgets for finance, legal, admin, accounting, assessing, board of selectmen, legal, treasurer, collector, comes up to fifty six thousand. You can see it was higher the year before last and higher even before then. Those are back when a portion of IT had been involved, which is no longer the case. You then get to the actual water department benefits and insurances. So the Medicare share for water department employees, the county retirement share of a hundred and three thousand for the water employees. You then have a figure of thirty two thousand, seven eighty four for the combination of their prior out of share of our workers comp, general liability, professional liability, public officials, and crime insurance, property and machinery insurance, excess liability and auto. Next, you have a specific piece of debt that is tied back to the water department that is paid out of the town's general fund. And lastly, health insurance. And the health insurance is a number that is carried by person, by type of plan, by actual cost of the plan in twenty one. And then actually, it was updated to twenty two. So that gets us down to two forty five for the insurances, when added to the fifty six for the admin, gets us to three hundred and one thousand, oh seventy six, which again is this number up here, which is added to their direct expenses, indirect expenses, total expenses. And those are the numbers that appear in the warrant article. Questions about that? I know that was kind of quick.
I'm good.
I'm, I'm happy to say that the commercial, commercial note here, editorial note, the, the water superintendent that the commissioners selected and recommended and that the board of selectmen appointed has been doing wonderful work. And he looked at his budget when he first got here and he had plugged in a number blindly of three hundred thousand dollars without any thought going into how it would really shake out for the indirect costs. And it's just interesting that he did that out of his head and it took me this spreadsheet to come up with three hundred and one thousand. So he has spoken in favor of this number as well with his board. Anything more on this sheet?
No.
Excellent. All right. So back to the warrant.
Can you put that up too, Jim? Can you display the warrant?
I'm sure I can figure that out. You're testing my limits of.
Screen sharing.
I'm not going to find where I created.
I thought you were, if you're not looking at it on the screen, that's all right.
I'm looking at the hard copy, but it'll take me a moment. I should be able to find it.
I just thought it might be easier for people to follow.
Sure.
That's all.
One last chance on this. Not to be.
Okay, that's all right. Go ahead.
So next, we would see the water department article seeking to pay down a bond anticipation note, a ban for the Main Street Water Replacement Project. That's a hundred thousand dollar request. And that would be paid out of their excess and deficiency. Next, we have a series of projects that they are requesting to close out.
Is there a call, Jones boy?
Calling Jones boy.
Um, could you mute, please? Whoever is.
Next, you'll see the articles that the water department is looking to close out. Those are prior articles that have been authorized by town meeting. The work has either been completed or they're not going forward with. So they'd be looking to close those articles out. Next, you would see the capital plan. And the capital planning article is one that we went over at the, I guess it was at the meeting this past weekend. So it's being submitted in a few moments on the agenda, but this is the capital plan that's been adopted for fiscal twenty two by the Capital Planning Committee. Next, you would have general financial articles. One would be a placeholder for payment management plan. The next would be housing authority, housing production plan. Next is the TCAM appropriation for PEG access funding. Next, you would see the five thousand dollars to fund, to, to precede the town's three hundredth anniversary celebration committee. From there, you would see a usual and customary financial article from the assessors to do periodic inspections and property data verification. There's also an additional requirement that's been put on them this year, another unfunded mandate that adds another two thousand dollars to the, to this, this article. So what was a twenty seven is now a twenty nine. Next, you'll see the final payment of fifty five thousand dollars under the prior separation agreement with former police chief Rick Bailey. And then there's stabilization articles, just as a matter of, of principle, I like to always have the stabilization articles there just to keep the concept of stabilization in our minds. If there are any dollars left at the end of the, the other financial articles, I would recommend they be placed in stabilization, just again, to train us up to save money. Next, we get to general business, general bylaws and adoptions, town clerk, increasing dog license fees, looking at a discussion on the adoption of a marijuana tax, local option marijuana tax.
Jim, hadn't we decided, did we decide not to do that? Or did we decide to leave it here for discussion?
Just for discussion. Yep.
Okay. All right.
You haven't voted on any, any of this stuff as in total yet. It's just, this was something that was submitted by the deadline and that's why I'm rolling it into the document.
Yep.
Next would be a request for North Middlesex Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund of their own. Then we would get into zoning and we would have the forty three D put on by the planning board, an age restricted housing bylaw by the planning board, and a scenic road bylaw by the planning board. Then there is special legislation articles would be the charter review report. And then real property articles, South Row Road parcel and Main Street Town Hall easement. And then
Shouldn't that one be under a citizen petition article?
Just going to say that. Yep, that, that came in my petition. So that would be in the next section as well. So citizen petition would be Main Street Town Hall easement and a request for forensic audit of the town's books going back to, I believe, January of sixteen. And that is everything that we have to date, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you. Any questions? Wayne?
No, I'm, I'm good.
The only question I have, Jim, is when does the warrant need to be posted? And when do we need to vote on this? I'm asking this because I know that May fourth, our next regular meeting isn't until August sixth. Is that too late?
April.
Oh, did I say May?
No, you said August.
August. Sorry. A words. So April sixth is our next meeting. So when do we?
That will be time sufficient. If, if you go back to the calendar that we've all been actually doing a good job of living to, we have to be posted two weeks in advance of May fourth. So counting backwards there, I have my calendar in front of me, but yeah, our first meeting in April will be well within time.
All right. So we should put this on the agenda for approval on April sixth. Okay.
Special town meeting warrants, articles are due by the second. So we'll have those in by then and be able to have the full, complete draft warrant on view for that meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right. Anything else on, on the warrant? We're moving on then to five point two point two, meeting logistics. And this is about town meeting. Where are we going to have it? When are we going to have it? And how are we going to have it? How's it going to work? Like, or do we want to try to have it outside like before? And, you know, even though it's early May, do we want to open town hall for this? What are our options? And there was guidance that came out from, who was this from, from the state?
Yeah, there was actually a piece of news that came out just this afternoon that curiously referenced being able to change the dates of caucuses and local town elections, but not town meetings.
Right. I saw that too. And I, I don't see any, although tomorrow we might get a new, another one that goes with town meeting.
Right.
I don't see any reason to have to move our town vote. It looks like you can do vote by mail. Is that true?
It was not clear to me what that sentence meant when they said that the provisions of the relaxed provisions for voting from COVID are being extended. And I'm not certain which ones they mean. And I don't know if Kathy's still on the call, but I would not want to say it. There she is. She just, she just appeared before.
Yes.
Want to say what I think that means because that's going to cause her to not be. Want to say what I think that means because that's going to cause her to not be.
So from what I understand, we will have vote by mail. I did put the application on the website today under the election information. So anybody who would prefer to vote by mail versus coming out to vote will be eligible to do so as long as we receive the vote by mail application for business days before the election, I believe it is. So it'd be the Wednesday by four o'clock, we would need to receive the vote by mail application. And we still have the Dropbox. They can drop them, the applications often. They can drop their ballots often. So it should be pretty easy. They don't have to all go through the mail. Except for us to mail out the ballots.
So that's like the 21st, the Wednesday is the 21st of April?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So they have to get their applications in by the 21st.
Yes. Yeah, we have to have enough time to mail them out.
Right. And then to return them by the day of the election, which is.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Terrific. So, so what do people think about town meeting? Where are we holding it and how are we holding it?
I think it worked fine at the library. Recommend doing that again. And I believe Pepperell's doing theirs outside. They're having a special one, I think, this weekend.
So are we doing it on the fourth, the evening of the fourth, or do we want to go with Saturday, the second with rain date or whatever of Saturday, the ninth? Can we do that? Can we make that change and do a Saturday instead of a Tuesday? Or do we just want to go with Tuesday night?
I think because we have a bylaw that stipulates the first week of May, you don't have that discretion to move it. Unlike last year when we had, you know, sweeping authorization from the governor to be able to do so because of COVID. I've, I've not been able to find any indication that we have that same flexibility this year yet. As you said, maybe tomorrow we'll find out that we do. But right now we don't. So.
Okay. So we should go then with Tuesday, the fourth outside at night.
So this, this then becomes not just tents and sound system, but also then lighting.
Unless we put an stop time on it and continue to the next evening. That would be another option. But if we need lighting, we get lighting.
Lighting and highway department has lighting, right? So we should be able to light that area up. Just maybe just do it a little bit earlier, start a little bit earlier during that, that Tuesday night. If that's possible. And call a certain time. You know, I think we need to have that kind of setup going forward this year. I think some of them meetings, when they get into that 12 and one o'clock hour, that's just on, that's just not acceptable for a lot of the seniors and people have to go to work the next day.
So we could do from like 5:30 to 8:00 PM or something. I'm, I'm just thinking how light is it at 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM? Starting on the Tuesday and then just continue Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Can we do that?
We could. And as of right now, it doesn't strike me somebody. It doesn't look like a long agenda. You know, there, there aren't a lot of warrant articles. Now the zoning ones generally are where we get a lot of discussion. But beyond that, there's not an awful lot on there that, to Joe's point, like a year and a half or so ago, when we went to one in the morning. You know, that was a very lengthy warrant. This one's not. So, and, and I didn't want my comments about needing light to seem like I was suggesting that we shouldn't do it. I was just thinking and letting it fall out of my mouth, but that's just another expense we'll have to, to be able to come up with, but we can use COVID funds for that because it is being held outdoors as a result of COVID.
Would it be an expense to us if the fire department, we have, I know the fire department has lighting towers. I mean.
The towers are good, but under a tent, you know, you're not going to get that same dispersion of light and we don't want people in the, in the dark or dusk even not being able to see well and catching a toe on a chair or something. So we can figure that out.
Will require everyone to bring a headlamp.
So from what I understand, Pepperell did a drive-in style town meeting last weekend and it comes across on the radio station, you are in your cars and they have instruments in which to vote. I forget what they're called, but so they press the button. Yes. Press the button. No. So that's something also that could be looked into. I don't know. But then people could stay in their cars.
How would people have their time to be able to respond? What was that? I mean, if someone had a question, how would that work?
I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to them over in Pepperell. I would think there'd be a microphone set up. You would probably get out of your car, approach the microphone. That's all I can think of, but I'm not really sure.
Okay.
But other communities have done it and successfully. So Beth Faxon and I were talking about it today because she went to it. So she has, she knows more about it than I do, but it's, it's an option.
What parking lot would, were you thinking we could use Kathy?
I don't know. Maybe the high school. Would that be a possibility? That's pretty, there's quite a few spaces there.
That's true.
Either way, we'll be out in the open in, in cold.
Right. So we should talk about it and maybe make a decision at the April 6th meeting. Is that too late? If we need to do rental of whatever we need to rent.
We pulled that off pretty quickly last, this past year. So I don't think that that'll be a problem. I can place a call and, and have a placeholder with the, the tent and lighting folks and the sound folks. So I think we'll be fine.
All right.
I like the idea of the cars. That's actually kind of cool.
It's not a bad idea. Keeps, if it's raining, it's not as, you know, it's not so bad. Or if it's windy, you're in your car.
You can have your heat on.
That's great. All right. So, um, so we'll discuss this and make decisions on the, on the 6th of April. All right. Moving on to budget update, town administrator, land conservation position, reorganization discussion. I was wondering, Jim, if we could move this, just given the time. Can we move this? It's eight o'clock already and I had wanted to start the executive sessions at 7:30. So. Our Saturday meetings perhaps?
Absolutely.
I, I think our next Saturday meeting is the 27th. Is that correct? Is that too late?
No.
Okay.
The, the issue of the reclassifications would not take effect until the beginning of the fiscal year anyway. So there's no real time sensitivity on those and the budget updates, we're, we're doing them. God bless you all every Saturday, you know, as it is for the last month.
Three Saturdays. I'm just thinking then we're going to move 5.3.1 and 5.3.3 to March 27th.
Perfect.
In the interest of time. And so that we might have to update the agenda. I don't know if those have already been posted, Jim.
They were, so we can make an update, but I posted them all in bulk.
Okay. So maybe update that, the 27th agenda. Thank you.
You got it.
All right. But we do have the capital plan. Do we want to discuss that? Or do we want to move that as well?
Well, there is a requirement under the bylaw that, that be reported out to the board of selectmen the first week of March. So this is your closest meeting to when we got a forum to approve it last week. So we're in the second week of March. So there's no requirement that you adopted, accepted or otherwise, just that it be presented to the board. So I can speak to it in any level of detail you'd like, or we can pass over it on the 27th as well. But I just needed for the record to have it land on your desk and, and be received now to be as close to the bylaw as possible.
Joe and Wayne, what would you like to do?
I've seen it already, so I don't have to.
It's in our packet. It is in our packet.
I mean, it just to, it was, it was agreed upon by the, the capital planning committee. With the monies we have in hand, there's no increase. There's, we were well within the budget to go over everything that was, for the most part, that was requested.
Well, the one thing I did have was the, that 20-year lease, which I would like to see, I, I would like, we can do this on the 27th, a report on.
We can use those funds to, to actually.
Okay. All right. So we'll move this then to the 27th unless there's an objection. Further discussion. All right. That brings us to Board of Selectmen announcements, updates and reports. Anything to bring forward?
I've got nothing.
Joe?
No, I'm all set.
All right. Same with me. Let's move to reports from board liaisons. Anything there?
I have not.
I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but you know, I know Jim reached out in regards, I was superintendent. Do we have anything on the agenda? Are we going to speak on any of that?
Um, I thought there was an executive. Okay. So, uh, all right. Moving on then to 5.6 approving the meeting minutes. I did just late this afternoon. I had gone over these minutes about two weeks ago and I forgot to send Carolyn my updates. So I did send her the updates. They were typos. There was nothing of substance really. You know, like it says is can, so make it either is or can or contract tracing changed to con, they were typos, contact tracing. So they weren't substantive changes. So do either of you have anything on those minutes? They were the minutes of 12:15, 20, 12:22, 20 and 1:05, 2021. And I have here that Joan Savoy wanted to comment on the 12:15 minutes.
I have nothing.
I can't discuss it. I wasn't on the board.
Okay. So Joan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, um, there was, I was on the 12:15 Zoom and I requested the, a draft of the 12:15 minutes and I noticed that the part of the 12:15 call that interested me was not reflected in the minutes. So I went back and watched the video of the meeting and which the BOS, thank you, you actually do post your meetings online and actually Wayne is when you were talking about the, the two grants that we had and you started by saying the two grants we have both expire on the 31st of December. And then there's this, all of a sudden that whole, this whole part is garbled, gone, gone, gone. And then when you start talking about this, the COVID cares release, relief grant, clear as a bell. And the, the part I was interested in, of course, is the part that was garbled and it's just so curious to me. Wayne, I'm not saying you did this at all, but it's just so curious to me. It just vanished and my experience has been, it's not the first time I've asked for meeting minutes or videos or audios where I was given a link to the audio and then I pressed on the link and the audio and the video is gone, it's gone. It's just been removed. Or I asked for an audio and a really important section of it was, is all of a sudden gone. So I just wanted to say that the 12:15 minutes do not reflect when Wayne was talking about the CDBG grant. That part is gone. But again, it gets clear as a bell when he moves on to CVRS.
And could you, could you point me to the section of the minutes? That it's missing? Like what section of the agenda was it? Like we, we do 3.1, 3.2, 3.3.
It was, it was, oh, it was very much at the end when liaisons report, um, report 5.2. I would think it would be 5.2.
Reports from liaison. Okay.
Yeah. Five, yeah. WM attended the trust meeting last week and called it funds that are available will expire on December 31st, 2020, noting that there's a strong possibility the state could grant an extension. He also did speak about that meeting because he, he started and you can hear that on the video still there. We have two grants, both expiring December 31st and then garble, 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 garble. CBDG is gone and then all of a sudden boom, the COVID stuff is very clear. So.
Okay. What I will do Joan then is let's not, let's not review these minutes. I'll go, I take handwritten notes. And I'll look and see what I have. If there's anything different from what is here. I will honestly say that I did not watch the minutes. I went by what I remembered, but I'll look and see if there is anything else.
Can I say something? This is Lisa Lewand. Can I say something?
Very quickly, please, because we're trying to move forward.
Sure. I just want to say Joan, um, as, as part of TCAM, I'm going to tell you now that that will not happen in the future. And there will be a backup recording as well. So.
Thank you.
It would be in our position. So there will be nothing gone.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate that. All right. So let's not do the minutes of 12:15 tonight. 12:22. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of 12:22?
Since Joe isn't on the board yet, right? So I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 12:22.
Second, all in favor?
Emilio, yes.
Veronica Kel, yes. All right. Um, how about the minutes of 1:05, 2021?
Make a motion that we accept the minute, meeting minutes from 1:05, 2021.
Veronica Kel second. All those in favor?
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kel, yes. All right. Thank you, Joan. We'll go back over those and see what we can find.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to next meetings, this is 5:07. The 3:13, I did this last week and I was just looking at the calendar, what meetings there are. So you can just cross out 3:13. That already happened. We have a 3:27 budget meeting. It's a Saturday. I wanted to ask if it would be easier for people if we met on Tuesday instead of Saturday to make the meetings for budget because.
Yep. Tuesdays are better.
These are better. Wayne, is that better for you?
So are you asking to move this Saturday budget to Tuesday?
Wondering about budget meetings on Saturdays. We had set these up in March, but it seems that it's hard for people to get to Saturday meetings. And if that's the case, then I don't mind moving them to Tuesdays. So it's whatever, I guess, whatever is best for the, you know, the board.
Well, considering that's the most important thing and we need to be there, I'd rather get the, the budget done and worry about the work session at another point. There's no real rush to get that done.
The work session on the 30th? Oh no, we're having the work session on the 30th.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm just saying the budget.
I'm looking at one budget meeting, either the 23rd or the 27th. I do not disagree that budget is important. I just think that if we're having budget meetings, we would, it would be great to have the Board of Selectmen.
I think that, I think the, and I apologize for last Saturday, but.
That's okay, Joe. Wayne, what about you? Yeah, I understand. It was important.
The 23rd is fine.
So Jim, what about you? Can we have a budget meeting on the 23rd instead of the 27th? Wait, you're, you're muted.
I've been living here, so you can call it anytime you want. I'll be here.
What about the FINCOM? Because they're involved as well.
They're, they're posted for the same time we are. So whatever you decide, I'll get out to them this evening and that my experience is they've been very flexible in prior years and, and meeting whenever it makes best sense for everybody.
Okay. So we did move those two, the three things that are kind of budget related because they're job descriptions. So we'll put that on the 23rd as well, meeting at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, sure.
Does that work for everybody? And can we, should we keep the 27th or remove it? And can we, should we keep the 27th or remove it? I would vote for removing it.
Remove it.
Okay, so we're moving the budget meeting to the 23rd from the 27th.
And we're keeping the 30th.
And we're keeping the 30th, exactly. So that way we have all Tuesdays and Saturdays can go back to what they were. It's a five Tuesday month, so.
That's fine.
Okay.
We gotta get the budget and we gotta, we gotta get through that. So and it's tough for some people on Saturday, so let's just move on.
Alright, so 3:23 budget and 3:30 work session. And the next regular meeting is April 6th.
Yeah.
Alright.
All the links, right?
Say that again, Joe. I missed it.
I said all the links, right? Jim, you'll send us all the links.
Yes. You, you're cutting in and out. I didn't hear you.
Alright, um, thank you very much. That concludes the regular session. We'll move into the executive sessions. So is there a motion?
About Madam Chair 5.8, review and sign payroll, bills and warrants.
Oh, I missed that. Oh, I moved right on. Yes, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, review and sign payroll, payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
There's second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, thank, yes.
In Miller, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Now we are concluding the regular meeting and we're moving into our executive session. So is there a motion?
I make a motion, we end our regular meeting and move into executive session.
And you need to read them, I think. All, we're going to read all three and are we coming back to, are we going to adjourn from regular session? Are we going to adjourn from the executive session?
No more open session.
No more open session. Okay, so Joe, read all three.
Or again.
And then, and we will not be returning to regular session.
Okay. Executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A3 to discuss strategy with the respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body and the CHISO declares ASME Council 93 Supervisors Union. Number two, executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A1 to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaint or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. Number three, executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A1 to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. And we will not return back into open session.
If, if there's second?
Second, second, second.
All those in favor?
Oh, thank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Thank you, everyone. Are we going to drop everybody off and then come back? Jim, you're muted.
We can just let everybody drop off and once I see that we're just, those of us here, I can lock us down. We have Dean's iPad. I don't know who that is.